Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and start with any public comment.
Just a short one to on the subject of broadband internet. Summer Lake is one entry point. And also other things transpiring up north and with Burns and John Day and stuff like that. First off, did you guys sign on? I heard, but I wanted to make sure. In agreement with the John Day Burns elective proposal? Is it how?
We verbally agreed. We're looking at options because of all the known cultural issues.
Sure.
Rivers end and well, out everybody. And have not heard back from Grant County Communications or whatever they're called. And they were aware of those issues as well. But we have not paid our fee for the application.
Archaeology has been twenty plus years. And obviously cause that archaeology tech and things also. That's common for all tanks. It's just how do you get around or mitigate for it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that particular connection. For years, we focused on central link, a backup to central link. Don't know the picture right past. As in the backup. This particular route, if it comes about. Well, actually, we could be our primary internet provider. And use central link as a backup. Central link is only forty eight strands, been there forty plus years. And we got other communities that draws on it. The bandwidth, they don't have a bandwidth capacity for our future. A brand new one hundred and forty four strands or greater would be the lifesaver for a generation tomorrow. So give us some thought along that line. On Summer Lake and the North Lake scenario, as you know, Plaza Company under Snake River Solutions, Chris Sutt, I don't know. Received the ARDO rural digital opportunity fund. I've worked with him several years. Now, Chris is kind of a controversial guy. But he's not in the picture right now, so we need to focus on giving that, making sure that that grant get implemented. Because it's, it'd be another fifteen to twenty years if we lose that option. So focus on the grant, not the personality. And again, that personality is not in the picture right now. And along that way, the ARDO grant is for last mile, meaning meaning connecting to residents. The middle mile is to connect between like between communities. So there's a little conflict there for the ARDO funds to connect Paisley to Summer Lake. Before I left office, I was working with the local ISP back in two thousand and sixteen to get something into Summer Lake. But he decided to go a different route, so it didn't happen. But still on the chart. Paisley and plus Adele was easier accomplishment because of the schools, E-Rate grants. Summer Lake doesn't have a school. So we had to go through a more obvious grant process through USDA Reconnect or through NTIA, both of them have middle mile options. And if you find someone to work on that middle mile, using either Reconnect, which is too late to put in for this year, but for next year. Or the NTIA, National Telecommunication Telecommunication and Information Administration. That may be a backup option for later this summer. Because we can't put in, we don't have time to put in for Reconnect. But those are two options if you've got a broadband group to work on it would be. Because plus and Adele plus specifically was the most dire need of technology. We got that accomplished. Now, the most dire need for internet is Summer Lake. Like I said, I've worked on it months, but I had a person back out on me. So we needed to keep it back on the table.
Does the NTIA grant allow for engineering costs as part of the grant?
That's something for the grant specialists to investigate.
All right, I have enough.
So anyway, just sharing my little passion to get modern day broadband out to rural communities. For the kids today, be community leaders tomorrow. So anyway, give us some thought, just a comment.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Let's go ahead to our additions and deletions. Any deletions?
Uh, no deletions. I have two additions. I have custodial position and the bus sale to the senior center.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with the custodial position. Do we want to have any discussion on that?
I thought we had good discussion yesterday. I think we can come to a motion today that probably will satisfy the board.
Do you guys want to go with the twenty dollars an hour? I guess I'll find out what your motion is.
Well, I'm, I'm maybe trying to do a nineteen fifty or something, you know. I think that's.
With step program?
Right. And you know, we can change this going forward if there's other possibilities. So for a full time position, you know, to be able to fund that, the full benefit package and everything, so.
The other thing to keep in mind is we have a backup janitor. I assume that this would also affect the backup janitor's pay as well.
The backup janitor also has the opportunity to apply for a position.
Sure. But.
But I get what you're saying.
That's our basement pay now, which is what we can relish, what I would assume.
All right. Do you want to feel a little bit more?
I do.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve a part time custodial position at nineteen fifty per hour. And just follow it to Jay and make sure we can get that stuff straight down.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Do we want to have any further discussion? I think we need to make clear that our backup janitor will be brought up to that pay also.
Yeah, backup janitor be brought up to that pay. This, we will leave it up to HR to come up with a step process. And part time means three and a half hours, right?
Three and a half hours a day.
And it also came with a it will come with set times.
Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
I'll do a personal action form for a backup person. Um, when do you want that effective? I did one this pay period effective first, but I can.
Where are we at in the pay period?
It ends.
It ends in a couple days, so I could make it effective now, next period.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, moving on, we'll go to the custodial. The bus sale.
Sounds effective.
We do a groundhog's day.
Yeah.
Big, big old room.
So again, this is a bus that the county owns that currently rates out in poor condition. According to Blue Book, Cut Blue Book, is that correct?
According to ODOT standards.
According to ODOT standards.
Mm-hmm. It's not its useful life cycle for ODOT standards. It's no longer something they want to keep. We've replaced it in their fleet with a new one. And so they signed the title over to us. We can dispose of it if we sell it for over five thousand dollars. We need to return the access of that to them. But we have the option of doing it as well instead of auctioning it.
So we have an interested party in the senior center. And I think that we'd like to make a motion to get that to the senior center as their backup bus.
So is that your motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the sale to the senior center of this bus we're talking about for the amount of one dollar to the county. Second, giving the bus to the senior center.
Second, motion been made, seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Southern Cascade Behaviors Batters Intervention Services. Two of them, right?
Yeah.
Both are fiscal impact fifteen thousand?
One's for batters and the other one's for sex offenders.
Make a motion to approve the Southern Cascade Behavioral Health and Lake County Community Justice Agreement with fiscal impact of fifteen thousand dollars per year to help with domestic violence intervention provider program.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed. Moving down to the Southern Cascade Behavior Offender Treatment Services. Services.
Chair, I will make a motion to approve the Southern Cascade Behavioral Health and Lake County Community Justice Agreement to put things to sex offender treatment provider.
Second.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion on that?
Again, a fiscal impact of fifteen thousand dollars per year.
Thank you, Chair.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. IGA with OYA. OYA stands for Oregon Youth Authority. That was the one I do not have.
Make a motion to approve the Oregon Youth Authority and Lake County Community Justice Juvenile IGA with fiscal impact of six thousand five hundred and ninety six dollars and eighty cents.
That's a biennial.
Or the biennial of January second of twenty two through January first of twenty twenty four.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? This, I think this is a really good program because anybody that tried to get their charges expunged previously had to hire their own lawyer, go through the process, some of them were very low ranking misdemeanors, but that were following the youth into the red bull. And so this way, their expungement happens automatically. Unless it's a sex crime or a violent crime. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Meeting minutes from one four twenty one work session and one five twenty one regular session.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January fourth, two thousand twenty one work session and regular session from January fifth, two thousand twenty one. Second, it, hang on one second.
Twenty two.
Twenty two. Thank you.
Copy, copy.
You pass.
Nice catch.
I said it actually, and I twice, and I only caught it on the second thing.
Nice catch. Nice catch.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Were we going to talk about the camping ordinance? What we gotta do on that?
We have to start the ordinance process.
Schedule it for hearings, two hearings.
So do we need to make a consensus to do that? The fairgrounds manager. The fairgrounds contract with Jake, we're gonna wait. Make sure the fairgrounds board approves it. And we'll approve it after their February meeting.
Okay.
On that one. Did we want to make any kind of consensus on the ATV road use? Or have further discussion?
I remember we tabled that discussion until we have more information coming towards.
Officially tabled. We had good conversation yesterday on the solar committee and on the building department. I really appreciated the conversations that we had. I wrote down a few things that we might start looking at a little deeper when it comes to our solar process. Those were making sure we protect the private property rights of people that want to have a solar farm. But also protecting our farm ground and our grazing ground. We talked about extending the distance between houses, the setbacks. The public process, making sure we have ample public process and opportunities for the public to engage. The GIS as a key component to future sites. Road use agreements. Plot plans. One of the things that we did discuss a whole lot, but and I don't know if we could do this, but the revenue, I think it was Carl Schumway brought it up about revenue being clarified before the project actually starts. And so put that in as part of the planning process. And the reason that I would like that in there is because if we're gonna enter into a virtually a lifetime contract, twenty five year lifetime contract with a contractor. I think we need as a board to be able to see, do we want that contract for twenty five years before it's built? Instead of then building the project and then having leverage to leverage what they want instead of the county. I'm just throwing that out there as a discussion piece. If we knew what the contract was prior to the building, it would help us, you know, in the future.
I, well, so traditionally, I think the community service SIP pilot, whatever you want to have, comes after, after the project's approved, but before it's built. So you guys will negotiate contract after it goes through planning.
Which actually though, and I agree one hundred percent, because you're going for a land use. You have your permission, you know, whether this is going to be approved or not. Do you want to spend a huge amount of time trying to figure out what this agreement's going to look like before you even get approved for land use? And typically, you know, that's the first step is to make sure it's even allowable. But actually, in the case of Obsidian, just using that as an example, that SIP agreement was put in place before you and I were even in office. And yet it came before us on an appeal to evaluate the land use. So, you know, sometimes it actually could be put into place prior to.
So now it's like, how, what did you say? Again, can you repeat what you said as far as it's after the building process?
Yeah, so it goes through planning commission and then that's approved. If it gets final, like it's not appealed or anything, then they come to you guys with some sort of investment plan generally. And then you guys negotiate whether it's a SIP, if it's, it can have SIP project or a pilot, if it's going to be just like a local solar farm. And you guys have some way. I agree though, like maybe in the upfront part, you could say, hey, we're not going to go below this megawatt rate or something. And just like have like your guys' expectations kind of lined out like, so they can say, oh, Lake County is where I want to go or Lake County is not going to take below seven thousand dollars a megawatt.
Right, and again, that seven thousand per megawatt, I worked a lot on that, but I only worked on the pilot agreement. A SIP is something entirely different. The only reason I was working on the pilot was because it had a sunset date at the legislature within the state. And so that was coming up and the question was whether or not they were just going to let it go away and not use the pilot anymore. Uh, or they were gonna extend it. And of course, everyone wanted to extend it. But that also left the option to reduce the rate and everyone wanted to reduce the rate, or at least the developers did. Um, but if you go with a SIP, you have to consider, you know, okay, megawatt, you know, nameplate capacity might be a lot lower than seven thousand per megawatt. Because you also have the community service fee and the ad hoc taxes. And so, you know, once you add those things on and, you know, nameplate capacity might not even be able to might not even be able to quantify that yet or calculate it because it's based on how much you're actually able to produce. And if you haven't built it yet, you haven't gone through land use, you don't actually know how many acres are actually going to be excluded or chopped up or chopped out, you might not know what that is. So land use is critical to get that figured out before you can even calculate what nameplate capacity might be. I do want to share some because I think those are all really good points. And I think that we need to make sure that we're taking a close look at these agreements. Because as you say, you know, it's a contract for a long period of time. And we want to make sure that our communities are getting the best deal. But it was brought up yesterday and we didn't really have the time to go into it. It wasn't really the format. But it was, it was mentioned and I forget who mentioned, I think it was actually the solar developer from Obsidian, I think it was Lori Hedgeson. Who brought up a lot of conversations around the state right now around siting. And there is, in fact, there is. I was contacted yesterday by Oregon Consensus who apparently got wind of some things that I had said on a Korea phone call. That I had expressed a little bit of unsatisfaction or dissatisfaction with how some things were being done. And the appeals constantly and everything else, like people need to get their ducks in a row. And I was a little frustrated by the fact that I heard that there was this huge siting conversation going on and no one had communicated with counties. Being that we're the ones that are typically approving the siting and by law mitigation agreements. Around, you know, and that's, that there's citing factors with that as well. You know, what was a good mitigation plan look like? Okay, so you're having a statewide discussion and you haven't invited a single commander. Pete Reynolds and I were like livid. And I didn't know it at the time, but apparently Pete Reynolds has, had got a hold of these guys. And then, you know, expressed his dissatisfaction and dropped my name and said, you need to do your research and you need to get a hold of these different people. So they did, and I had had chance by that time to go through before I had communicated with them. I was intending to reach out to them, but they called me first. I can send this to you guys. It's Oregon Smart Siting Collaborative is what they formed. They are paid by Renewable Northwest and ONDA are some of their funders. And now, not all the stuff that they, and I explained this to them. Well, it's, it, well, it was, and I, you know, and I was still doing my research when they called. And I was reading through the material, but they do identify in here on the sizing opportunities and preventative, preventing conflicts. They explain that large scale developments can also conflict with the protection of natural resources and cultural resources. That was one of the very first lines of their document where they identified the conflicts that there can be between the, which I think echoes the essence of what we discussed last night really. Was the conflict between large scale development of this type and the natural and cultural resources that we're looking for test. So I told them that they needed to make sure that they were engaging with us. Because when we talk about siting, when we talk about the preservation of private property and everything else and and making sure that we're having a holistic look at this. I don't want to leave out the mitigation agreements and this is why, because I've never explained this in a public meeting. My concern is that there is a movement within the state that would like to see mitigation agreements exclude cattle from mitigation areas. Because they're permanent wildlife corridors reasons. What that does, and I think, you know, group, when I see groups like ONDA or others, because they've supported, it's no secret, they've supported those concepts in the past of removing cattle from the landscape. If you have private property that we identify as only twenty some odd percent of our county. And a small portion of it, or no matter how small or big, is being taken out of agricultural use for a large scale solar development. And then you have, say, a two to one mitigation. Twice the footprint of land for a mitigation area. Also, private property typically, because we have never seen a mitigation agreement that included public land. So you're, because all you're playing with is private land at that point. That's your whole sandbox. So you're, you're taking private land out of use to put solar on it, and then you're taking twice as much and putting it in mitigation area that you're also excluding agricultural use.
Yeah, so we're, it's almost tripling.
It is, it's tripling the impact. And so, and that's only if it's at a two to one. And so I think we need to be cautious of this and make sure that we're not accepting any of this. And now, I've explained this to ODFNW, to Sarah, to John Muir, to others. And they understand where I'm coming from. So I don't feel like I'm, you know, this is a critical in any way, shape or form. But the ODFNW at a state level have a policy of a zero net loss. Zero net loss policy for the wildlife habitat and everything else. So when they see an impact on private land, ODFNW comes to the table and they say, well, you're impacting wildlife and we have a zero net loss policy. So we want you to have some mitigation over here. Now, they're not demanding wildlife corridors or anything else permanent easements. But if that goes through, because of their zero net policy on land they don't own. You kind of see where I'm going with this. It's a concept of of drawing, drawing, you know, like big game winner range area over someone else's property and saying that you have a right over it. Because there's elk that grazes through someone's pivot. And then you say, well, that's wildlife habitat. Well, yes. So you're saying that I have to exclude all my agricultural use now and want to allow wildlife. You know, I mean, they're not saying that. But I want to make sure that we're not allowing certain factions or groups within the state to push concepts like that. Permanent wildlife easements.
Cover back door.
It, it's just, I, I've, I've been on a lot of phone calls where that that concept has snuck in. And there's, there's pieces of it and fragments. And so when we look at siting, it's not just a sighting factor. And so, when we look at citing, it's not just a citing factor of where solar is appropriate. But also a citing of where mitigation is appropriate, and I'm doing this for, and I'm saying this for the benefit of ODFNW as well. Because they've obviously struggled with where developers wanna do mitigation sometimes. Uh, you know, what is good mitigation? I mean, how many functional acres are they getting out of it? I think it's a, it's a round of conversation that needs more work. Um, and so, I'm kinda throwing that out there for.
Very, very, very points, yeah, I like the, you know, maybe. What would help us a bunch in signing is if we had something similar to zero net loss on our farm. I don't know how we could pull that out.
It's hard because we're dealing with private land.
Right, right, and so, how do you do that? And so. But I love the concept, um, you know, uh, Richard Bradbury brought up something pretty well too. Is if these solar developers could set their. Panels higher and allow. The cattle, sheep, goats, whatever to graze underneath, because if you go past any solar plant. There's a lot of, there's abundant feed under those panels usually, and, um. If they could use them, continue using them for pasture. It would, it would save a ton of headache, then we wouldn't be losing that aspect. In approving these, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Um. So this is, I I wanna share this because I I looked into this, this is what you're talking about is what they call agrivoltic solar. We do not have agrivoltic solar in Oregon. Um, what we have, well, it's just. Because it's, it comes to a money factor and I can explain. Uh, so. I I researched it and the people who have done the most amount of work on agrivoltics and researching it and looking at rules. For what they call dual use, because you're 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 not taking farmland out of production, you're just having a dual use for it. Europe has done the biggest amount of work on this project, uh, and they, and there was the Fronthauser Institute in Germany. Actually wrote the rules for the European Union for land use around agrivoltic. And they have literally two rules. And one of them is that solar is only acceptable where it complements, has a synergistic. Effect on agricultural land, and the reason for that is because Europe, we can, I'm I'm gonna get stoned for bringing up European policies in a Lake County meeting. Uh, but the reality is is that Europe did bring most of what, you know, we have as modern day farming forward. Uh, and many of the modern day farming practices, Europe and places like Holland, for example. Holland is a huge exporter of food. They they grow more food than just about anyone per capita in the world. Um, ever, and so when they put in solar and there was an experiment they did. With solar and the guy did it on Raspberry Farm and basically they spaced the solar cells a little bit further apart and made transparent panels. And they actually built greenhouses, so to speak, with these things. They were producing ten megawatts of solar on one footprint of land where the crop being produced. And Jer- Fronthauser Institute said we could do this with just about any crop and they could, they did this on multiple ones. The top three. During, uh, cold, wet years, they saw a decrease. Uh, to crop production, but during hot, dry years. Which are very common up here. Uh, they saw a crop increase of production by up ten to twelve percent. For potatoes, celery, winter wheat, everything. Um. And they, and fifty percent reduction in water consumption. Fifty percent because of the the space under the panels and everything else, and I run sheep. Now sheep, the biggest loss that, you know, impacted sheep when you run them is sun. Because they're wearing wool and everything else, you know, and it can add weight loss issues and everything. If you have shade, that you provide them, you have a synergistic effect. We don't do agrivoltic because it creates, it ha- it has lar- longer poles, there's more cost to the developer. And so, it's just something that's never been experimented with Oregon. What we have is pseudo agrivoltic developers typically that pass themselves off as complimenting agriculture. And I I think, you know, when we talk about having something that complements the farmer. Conserves water by fifty percent, we were all at, you know, in up in Christmas Valley when we listened to some of the water issues that they're having. And they're looking at water conservation methods, um. All those things are tools that we can provide to the public if we take the red tape out of the way. But it's, we also wanna make sure that we're. Looking at the whole picture, I'm.
So also in the plan, uh, on Blue Marvins, I noticed that they had the option of doing dual use. And they didn't do it, but I'm assuming that every. Solar developer is getting that option, um, and I'd like to look into that one, though anyways, I'm gonna.
And promote it, so, yeah, I I took a.
You gotta think about it though, too. If you're gonna put cattle underneath solar, you're probably gonna have to use concrete to keep your pole, so.
Well, I mean.
And then you look at what in the, when it's over twenty five years, yanking all that stuff out. You know, it just increased costs, increased impact.
So that's a really good point, and we did talk about that with some of the things that I was talking about agrivoltics with. It doesn't really fit for cattle production as as much as it does with smaller animals like goats and sheep and things.
It's something that maybe. We need to start trying to develop because if. Like if you drive out of town and. The the one on Rabbit Hill Grove, uh. It's growing more grass around that, those panels than I've ever seen in that area. You know, where they don't mow, you know, when they go down through there with their brush hog. The stuff they leave in between, shoot that grass is that tall. And I'm sh- assuming that that's never been, so it goes back to the science part of what you were.
Water conservation and crop increase of production.
It's almost acting like a greenhouse effect of some kind.
Yeah, you might not be necessarily a rancher, you might be a farmer that wants to grow something, you know, different or grow potatoes even. If it can suit a use and reduce your water consumption, it's a tool to a farmer to use, at least on a small scale. Um, but, yeah, it it, I figured I'd share that with you guys because. I've been dealing with a lot of. It's good to know, just, it just back and forth, I've been looking at both sides of this argument and trying to just educate myself on the issue. It's, it's a big, big issue that no one's really come to a solid. You know, ring on in the past.
So moving on with that, I had battery houses on there. Um, progressive goals. Um, Jim brought up a good one, was the soil, actual soil grade. You know, if the soil grade is junk, you know, where it doesn't grow anything. Changes the whole aspect, but if you have really good soil. In a certain place, we wanna avoid those, um, and then the dual use thing. And if you guys had anything else that you wanted to add. I'd like to. Perp this up, give it to Darwin. And get it to our solar committee or planning department. And continue this discussion of what, you know, the direction that we wanna go as far as. So, so.
Oh, limited to.
Yeah. And I I I'm, I think everything should be able to, even if we have these in here. Everything should be able to be mitigated, you know. I mean, there's gonna be circumstances for virtually everything, you know, and so. If we're, if they're able to come to us and say, hey, this doesn't work because of this, can we mitigate this part out?
Yeah.
I have no problem with that, it's just, I really have a problem with being force fed something. And us not having anything to back ourselves up with, and so. Anyways, carrying on. Do you guys have anything you wanna, else you wanna discuss, updates?
Um, I am gonna go to DC for NACO. February. Although through the sixteenth, I believe, so. I'm going for the agriculture part of it.
And natural resources.
The downside is, is I don't know that, you know, they're in session.
Well, that's why I was out, but the natural resources discussions are huge and, um. I think it'll benefit the county, the whole county by going on to.
I'll try to attend an energy meeting as well.
But you're. I'll be going to the Oregon Bear Association, sixth through the ninth. Um, and so, I think we're having meetings then, correct, Monk? Do we have a commission meeting that? Okay, I was just gonna try to fix that. Also going to meet with AOC on the tenth, since I'm already up there. I'm gonna have some discussions on some eastern Oregon. Plans that we might have or discussion, make sure our voices are heard. And so, if either of you two want me to discuss any subject, just give me the information you want me to talk about. I'm also bringing this forward to the Eastern Oregon Association of Counties, so. If there's some other commissioners over there at the same time, I'd like them to join me in the meeting. Just to talk about eastern Oregon stuff and to get our horses heard at the state level, so.
Kind of the derbies, sorry.
So, one one, uh, date that's super important, Commissioner, if you could make, is the reconnect grant discussion. For the railroad, I believe that's on the sixteenth of February, and that's when I'll be coming home. So, that's gonna need our support. For the railroad reconnect plan.
Are we going to be, are we gonna be in short session then? Are we gonna be?
Uh, we got some emails there from David Answer that describes the.
I'll, I'll have all the information prepared.
Um, we do have an executive session on the thirty first, by the way. Yes. Just, uh, we're taking lead ongoing litigation. Um.
So what we discussed yesterday?
No, no. Yeah, we can't, can't, yeah, can't talk about it right now, but Melanie can fill you in.
Thank you.
Or or Dave. Uh, Mr. Fülmer, do you wanna, uh, can I give us an update on fire defense?
Well, yeah, our defense working last night. Uh, one of the is, the big issue that, uh, is before the defense board was, is that they originally received. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, that was, uh, from ARPA funding. Uh, through Representative Bree Iverson. And a week or two ago, uh. All the way up till a week or two ago, we were under the impression that we had to follow ARPA rules. We we do to an extent have to follow ARPA rules because the money that was given to the RFPAs, the Range and Fire Protection Association. Was lottery dollars, so they had no restrictions on how they spent the money. So, ARPA rules fell back to more, uh, water broadband housing. You know. Following those lines of thought, but, um. The state got back to us and said that revenue loss to the county also is a factor and that that this would fall under that. So it allows, uh, fire departments to utilize the money. Under current ARPA rules, utilizing the revenue loss route. So, that's good news, they're busy finishing up their paperwork to submit to the state. So that, uh, we have seven rural fire departments in Lake County. They are working on a plan to upgrade. Uh, protective, uh, equipment, PPE, they all, they all desperately need radios. They need, uh, you know, multitude of things that to get them a little more up to speed. Their goal is that they would, uh, eventually. Have some very nice, uh, type six engines. Uh, that potentially could go on some of these state mobs across the state to help other counties. But right now, we don't have the equipment to drive out of town very far to make that happen, so, uh, trying to get up to speed. There's also other, uh, things that, a Senate bill that, uh, seven six two. That is looking at, uh, adding seventy five engines to the fleet of the state of Oregon. And Lake County, through Oregon State Fire Marshal.
Yeah, of course.
And Lake County, it's hopeful that we may be in line for a few of those engines. So, then there, what this all means is that we're gonna get some upgrades in our county fire departments or volunteer fire departments.
Yeah.
Throughout. Those, that was the big item, uh.
What else? Now we talked radio frequencies for too long.
The key there is that, you know, we have wildland urban internet based fires. County or these volunteer fire departments show up, we get the federal, force service BLM and state, uh, resources show up, can't communicate. Uh, it's a dangerous situation and not ideal, we're making sure that we all have the same bank of channels, both fed and private. To where we roll up, we can be either on. On local county channels or we can be on federal channels and have those folks convert depending on the ownership of the fire. That's a big.
We talked a little bit about numbering the vehicles as well and the numbering system that we use to number the apparatus. And that was some good conversation there, I I personally would like to see all of our fire departments in Lake County using the same numbering system. Um, you know, I think RFPAs are doing a little bit something different, you know, what worked for them, but at least the fire departments. Because the way they're numbered, it tells you what's coming. If you get, if you say rig, you know, vehicle three, one, four, six, or whatever, you know what kind of rig it is, is it a heavy, is it a small engine, you know, is it a tender? And so, uh, not all of our fire departments are using the same system, but I think there was some good discussion last night that. That maybe where we're going, kinda get everyone on the same page.
Great idea.
Uh, so, yeah.
So if I just started with three, it might be a heavy then, or.
Yeah, yeah, well, like, I think the first be, the first two numbers are like, you know, what the vehicle number is or something, and like the third number and the fourth designate, you know, what. Kind of vehicle and what's what's on its way, and it helps, and you don't want.
Force system, road system, but I didn't know about Tilbury and Toby.
Yeah. And it also will tell you what departments it's it's coming from too, because of the different station numbers and everything else, and we don't want vehicles with the same number on. Um, you know, so that's, it's really critical we get everyone on the same page, but. Thank you. Um. I just told you before we started the meeting, I'm in a meeting at two o'clock today, uh, interviewing new water master.
Oh.
Uh, so, uh, two o'clock, one candidate, they had one candidate from in, uh, internally. Um, and so, we're gonna interview him at two and see how that goes. If they don't like, if we don't, uh, like it, we can put it back out for other candidates.
Is the duty station Lakeview, Oregon?
That's the, that's one of my questions, you know, I'm not working remotely.
That's what I think.
We already got two water masters for Lake County. And the north end water master is working out of Ben.
Out of Ben, yeah.
We don't need.
Without any of, without any of our inputs.
Yeah, and.
It's unfortunate.
You know, I have a list of questions, one of them would be, you know, like, okay, if you have a land. Yeah, and, you know, I have a list of questions, one of them would be, you know, like, okay, if you have a landowner that is potentially out of compliance. Or out of, uh you know, there's a violation or taking water from someone else or using too much, whatever it might be. Um that he doesn't have a water right for, what is your first or second primary goal, what is, what is your MO? What 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 is, what are, what are you intending to achieve when you interact with them? Um my hope is he says something to the effect of voluntary compliance. Working with the landlord, if if, you know, he says something like. You know, well, I just dropped a hammer down on him, or something like that. That would hearken back to previous water masters that we have had in this county that created a huge amount of issues. For us and the wa- for the water resource, so if either of you have any questions that you'd like to see asked, you know, that you have some concerns. Um jotting down and I'll make sure that I kinda have those, you know, presented to our water resource before two o'clock today.
You pretty much do what I want, you're already, we're gonna ask what I want, so.
Okay. I'm gonna be gone on the fourth of February for EOCCO board meeting in Portland, at Moda Tower. So we're actually having our first in-person meeting in two years. So, or since February two thousand twenty, so this is kind of a big deal. To get the whole board together again and actually do some work. Um it's nice to see them getting brave enough to do it. Library. You gotta, that position has been put out there, they're still looking to do do interviews at some point unless they get enough applicants. Roads, um I was gonna mention this, but actually, Commissioner Schillingberger, you'd have a better idea. They're gonna open up that road um going down to Modoc County in the Warner Valley, Kevin's gonna open that up because. Modoc County, I guess, is opening up their side, and so.
We have some ranchers that need that.
Yeah.
One more.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we had two search and rescues off of that last week on the same day.
Right.
And so it's, it's signed as no winter maintenance, uh obviously when we're getting all the snow. It's more than what our road crew can do, but now that we've had this mild weather, we're gonna take a look at it and see about getting it open.
So Mo Rock County's gonna do their side, Lake County's gonna do theirs, so little update.
Is there an ETA on that? I had a concern, so.
ETA, uh I believe, uh yeah, uh.
Beginning today.
Yeah.
Should be open that by tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there those anything else?
I have nothing else on my list.
With that, we will. Join the meeting at. Ten fifth.